We're recording.
All right, we're go, all right. Um, welcome everybody to tonight's City of Tombwater Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It's seven P M. And our meeting is called to order. I will start with our roll call. Commissioner Edwards.
Here.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick is excused. Mr. Staff. Thank you, you just muted. But I see. Commissioner Staff, I think you are there. Oh.
He's here, he's waving.
Okay, he's saying, yes, he's here, thank you. Um, Commissioner Tobias.
Here.
Great, Commissioner Verella.
Here.
And me, Commissioner Robbins. Thanks, everybody, for being here. Um. Let's see, are there any changes to our agenda? Tonight?
Staff has no changes.
I'll. Ask Commissioner Staff if you, if you did want to raise your hand to speak for. Anything? Nope, off it goes, right, thank you. Um. Let's go to Commissioner Reports. Anybody have anything you want to bring to our group, to our meeting? Okay, looks like not. Brad, do you have a manager's report?
Yeah, I just want to call attention to a couple of things. In your packets, I included the updated meeting schedule and topic lists. Uh, we can talk about this more in our second item tonight. Uh, but. Basically, we've, we've expanded the amount of time we're going to be spending on the comp plan update through the end of twenty-five, crossing our fingers that the legislature gives us the extra six months. Because otherwise, it's going to be real, real painful. Um, so, uh, I'll touch on that a little bit more later. Um, the other thing I want to mention is the, we gave testimony at the public hearing at the State Building Code Council for the Wildland Urban Interface Code on Friday. Um, I am waiting to find out when the council will be meeting again to discuss the hearing results and the proposed changes, and hopefully make a decision. Once we have that in hand, then we'll probably be adding back all the, uh, urban forestry amendments to our calendar again. Uh, those have been on hold pending, uh, resolution of the issue at the state level. Last thing I want to mention, um. Thing I entirely forgot. It was, it was great. It would have been riveting. Uh, but I forgot.
Okay, I'm sure it will occur to you in, in, uh, just a little while. Um. Okay, but that's good that you, um, you had a chance to talk about the urban wildland interface. Good. Um. And thanks for including the revised schedule. That's always good. Let's see, Brad, for, um, do you have anyone, um, signed in to, to make general public comment?
Uh, we have no one in person, but we have Jerome as a remote attendee.
There we go, okay, I see him now. Uh, all right, Mr. Twainio, if you would like to address the planning commission on general matters, this would be a great time to do that. We are going to have a public hearing in a minute on our particular topic. Um, if you would like to address this, please state your name and your affiliation, and go ahead.
Yeah, hello, uh, this is Jerome from the Joe Cruz.
All right, great. Thank you, thanks for, thanks for being here. Um. Let's go on to the public hearing portion of our meeting. And, um, this is where I need to go through our procedure. Uh. Uh, for our, for our public hearing process, so. Um, bear with me here. Um, there are people in the audience, uh, just welcome. Uh, we're about to have a formal public hearing. Tonight, I'm the Chair of the Meeting, Elizabeth Robbins, and, um. If, uh, do I need to introduce everyone else on the commission? We have, um.
I don't think so.
Okay, great.
If you'd like.
Okay, um, we, we do have a quorum tonight of, um, of our commissioners, so we are, we are able to meet formally. Um, our role as a planning commission is to make advisor, advice to the city council. Our, the planning commission doesn't make, uh, uh, decisions for the council. We make advice to the council. Um, our public meeting tonight is to take testimony on an ordinance, uh, that we'll be acting on, uh, after the public hearing, and that's ordinance number oh, two thousand and twenty-three dash oh-one-seven, uh, to revise the Tombwater Municipal Code, um, at eighteen thirty-eight, the floodplain overlay. So, uh, you know, the public, public comment here is to, um, or we'll be taking public testimony so that that can help us make a decision of whether to forward that, um, ordinance draft to the council. Um, I'll explain in a few points what the procedure for the hearing is. Um, when I open the public hearing, um, we will hear then a staff report from Brad Medrude, our city, um, planner. Uh, then the commission will have a chance to ask questions of staff. And then I will formally open up for public testimony on the subject of our hearing. And once we've heard from, um, everyone that wants to talk. Um, then I'll close the public hearing. If there are any public comments, I'm going to ask that all speakers speak clearly into a microphone. Um, give your name and your address, uh, for the record. Um. All speakers, um, need to address just the topic in front of us tonight, again, that ordinance on the floodplain overlaying. Um. And if there's, if, I don't know that we have a lot of, or maybe even anybody tonight, but, uh, let's say, um, three minutes max for anybody who does want to speak. That's relatively generous. Um, if we have anybody, if there's repetitive comments, I'm going to, um, ask that those be avoided. And we have a large group, which I don't think we do, I'm going to, I ask for a representative to speak for that group. And lastly, any unruly behavior, of course, won't, uh, won't be allowed. All right, so our matter, um, uh, before the planning commission can, commission tonight is, um, ordinance number oh, twenty, that, two thousand and twenty-three dash oh-one-seven, uh, Tombwater Municipal Code eighteen thirty-eight, the floodplain overlay, again, uh, we're hearing, uh, we're going to take public testimony on that, and then make a decision after the close of the public testimony on whether to advance that to the city council. All right. I hereby open the public hearing on ordinance number oh, two thousand and twenty-three dash oh-one-seven, Tombwater Municipal Code eighteen thirty-eight, floodplain overlay. Um. This, and then I think we, um, if we have anybody who is there to speak, right?
Uh, we don't have any members of the public in person.
All right. Did you hear from anybody in one way or another, phone or email or any way?
No, uh, both the, uh, the SEPA review and the state notice of intent review are complete, and there were no comments received on either one of those.
All right, thank you. Okay. Let's see, you want to go to the presentation right now? I might have a little got, got things a little bit out of order, but go ahead with our staff report, if you would, Brad.
Yeah, and I will keep this fairly abbreviated because this is very similar to what was presented to the planning commission at your work session.
Okay.
So, if there's any comments or so forth, I'm not going to go into detail in the examples in the slide. I'll touch on some of the, the high points here. So, the most important thing to understand is we're doing a process that is being replicated essentially across the state uh, for the, uh, federal emergency management agencies FEMA National Flood Insurance Program. Um. As part of the, uh, ensuring that the, the people who have property in the city and the floodplain or the floodway can continue to have access to federally backed flood insurance, we need to be updating our floodplain management regulations to FEMA standards. And we need to do so in a timely manner before the new maps are in place and the new program is in place. In two thousand and twenty-three, in the May, uh, city staff had completed a FEMA floodplain community assistance visit, uh, which is run by the State Department of Ecology on the behalf of FEMA to review our participation in the current National Flood Insurance Program. Uh, the community assistance visit determined that our, uh, T N C eighteen thirty-eight floodplain overlay would need to be updated to reflect FEMA current standards, but not in a substantial fashion. We're, we were close, but there are, there are some new nuances that need to be incorporated into that section. We also received notification last year in November from FEMA that these, the final flood determinations for the county and the incorporated areas, which includes the City of Tombwater, were complete. Uh, these flood hazard determinations, uh, are, are, are ready and will become effective on May eighth. That includes both the rate maps, which show graphically where people, uh, whose property may or may not be within floodplains, as well as the flood insurance study, which is the technical side of that, that shows the detail of how those maps were generated. Both of those elements, by the way, are used by the city for regulatory purposes to determine what properties fall in and out of the floodplain. So. Uh, that's an important thing. As I mentioned before, uh, prior to the effective date, uh, the flood insurance, uh, study and the, the maps, uh, we must update our existing floodplain regulations, uh, to be consistent with not only the model ordinance for floodplain management under the National Flood Insurance Program, uh, the Endangered Species Act, concerned primarily here with salmon, and maintaining our eligibility for the National Flood Insurance Program. The staff report includes summaries of all fifteen proposed amendments, uh, the code sections that are amended or added, as well as the proposed code language. I won't go through each of these in detail. I'll just touch on what has changed here. We've updated the definitions to include eight new definitions. Uh, all of these things are things that were called out by FEMA that require further explanation within the code. For special flood ad hazard areas, we've updated the language to reflect the most current versions of the flood insurance study and the maps. Uh, in our, in our code, we make explicit reference to the data of, of these studies to make sure that we're referring to the proper things when applicants come in for permitting. And also, we've added the, uh, an acronym for base flood elevation to match our definition section. In terms of flood hazard data, uh, we have added a reference to, uh, the base flood elevation and floodway areas where data is not being provided or is not available for the flood study or their flood insurance rate maps. This is a, it, uh, I don't believe we have this issue necessarily within the city, but it's a required element of the, the model code. We've revised the section dealing with floodplain development permits. Um, we've added that the permit is required within special flood hazard areas and tie that back into the definitions that are provided in the, in the code. We've updated our acronyms, uh, to be consistent again with the definition section, and added five subsections that provide additional detail on the application materials that applicants need to include in their applications when they're, they're, they're filing an application that's within the floodplain or the floodway. In terms of record keeping, uh, we are required to, uh, keep records of all permitting that is done within the floodplain. Uh. And also, basically, assign this role to the floodplain administrator to ensure that any proposed construction will be safe from flood flooding. Uh, in addition, there has to be a list of information that we have to obtain and make to, available to the public. So there's some very specific things that we need to have available. Under development and subdivisions, uh, we clarified that short subdivisions, that's in short plots, which is anything under, uh, nine lots or less, inviting site plans are subject to the floodplain ordinance. And also that subdivisions or developments with over fifty lots or five acres must provide base flood elevation data with the application. Essentially, this would be tying in with the survey data they would be providing, uh, as part of their application process. We updated the flood protection standard sections, uh, again, talking about where it could be determined or obtained for the base flood elevation. Talked a little bit about materials that can be used that are resistant to flood damage. The same thing with construction math, methods that can minimize flood damage. We talked about anchoring, um, and also there's a couple of details about attached garages uh, that have, uh, built with a floor slab that's below the base flood elevation. Uh, they have to be designed in such a way that allows floodwaters to move through the building so that you don't have something, uh, a flood come through that takes that off the foundation. Uh, for non-residential construction, we had to do some reformatting. Uh, we created some additional standards for non-residential construction. And also, uh, made, have to make it clear here, this is, this was a requirement before, but they wanted called out in a special section that new construction or any substantial improvements of any commercial, industrial, or non-residential structure still have the lowest floor, including the basement elevated at least a foot or more above, above the base floor elevation. Uh, this applies to all of the areas within the city. All these A zones essentially are, are the, in the city right now. Manufactured homes, again, we had to deal with anchoring requirements for the manufactured homes. Uh, a new section was added for detached accessory structures. Uh, this is such standards for structures built below the base flood elevation that are used solely for parking vehicles or limited storage. Uh, what kind of things can be in there, how they need to be designed and so forth are all addressed as part of that. Also, a new section dealing with the storage of materials and equipment. Uh, this is essentially saying that the storage and processing of materials that can be interest to human, animal, or plant life, if released due damage from flooding, is prohibited in the special flood hazard areas. Uh, essentially, we don't want to create a much larger problem if the floodwaters go over a particular site. A little more detail on that, what that looks like. And we updated the floodway standards to deal with encroachments, fill, and everything, uh, is prohibited unless there is a way of demonstrating through professional engineers, uh, work that development will not result in any increase of flood levels uh, during an, an occurrence of the base flood discharge. Essentially, is if you build something within the floodplain or you change the, the, the earth in any way in the floodplain, that takes away capacity, uh, to hold floodwater, you must basically mitigate for that by creating the opportunity for floodwater waters to be held somewhere else within the floodplain. Um. Also, additional limits of how to deal with residential structures, and also any of the other things that we have to do for substantial improvements in floodway. This was a discussion that we had at the work session, uh, dealing with penalties for non-compliance. This is the only area of the ordinance that changed between the version that the planning commission saw at the work session and, and is now seeing today. Uh, and this has to deal with penalties. And in the first section, section A is the one that changed. Uh, we struck this, all the language dealing with specific, uh, monetary fines. I believe we had a monetary fine of one thousand dollars and the potential for up to ninety days in jail for any violations of the provision. Uh, those were taken out and the, essentially, we're falling back on our existing regulations in Title One. Both the criminal and civil proceed, uh, procedures that are outlined in there provide more than enough uh, to, to do, basically outline the process that would be dealt with if we needed to deal with the violation. Also, it doesn't create a conflict, which I think the original code language that we were proposing did. So, this is much simpler and much cleaner, uh, and deals with the same process that we deal with non-compliance elsewhere in the code. This section also has not changed. As I mentioned, both the notice of intent, uh, process has been completed through the State Department of Commerce and the SEPA determination for nonsignificance, determination of nonsignificance, uh, came back without any comment. Uh, so we're good to go on that. There was a question asked at the work session about FEMA notification regarding the draft maps. Uh, by law, FEMA is required to publish two notices in the newspaper record for the communities affected by the map change. They did so through the Olympian. Uh, there was also an attached ninety-day appeal period, and there were no appeals received during that time. Uh, this is an outdated document. We are now effectively over here. Uh, so all of these things have occurred and have been issued. Also, if for additional information, uh, the draft maps are available online. First of all, the Thurston County Lakes flood map update, as well as the preliminary hazard map update comparison that shows both the current maps and the maps that will be effective in May eighth. The next steps, uh, staff is asking that the planning commission conclude a hearing and forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the ordinance. And then the city council will take up the ordinance in March. And that concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you. Um. Let's see, um. Just to check in, uh, well, first of all, let me, let me see if any planning commissioners have any questions at this point. Some shaking heads or no? Um, Brad, and I'll, I'll check again and see if anybody else has, or has arrived for the meeting who might be wanting to to, uh, make testimony.
Nobody, nobody in person and nobody else online.
All right, good deal. Thanks for checking. Um. Let's see, I don't think that means that our, um, that our, uh, public testimony, our public hearing then is hereby closed on the topic of ordinance number oh, two thousand and twenty-three dash oh-one-seven, Tombwater Municipal Code eighteen thirty-eight, floodplain overlay. Um, thanks, everybody. Um. Now, our, um. Uh, our task here as a planning commission, um, then is to decide what we want to, what we want to do with our, with our ordinance. You know, we can either extend if we feel like we didn't, for some reason, talk about this enough or hear enough about it. Um, we can recommend approval. Can modify it further if we like, or we can deny, recommend denial. All right. Discussion, action? Is that, is that Vice Chair Tobias?
Yes, but I wanted to make sure I've got the, the number right. Actually, I was going to ask for. Um. Thank you. I want to make sure I got the number correct. Um, this is Vice Chair Mike Tobias. I move that we recommend approval to the city council of ordinance number oh, two thousand and twenty-three dash oh-one-seven, uh, Tombwater flood, uh, floodplain overlay, T N C eighteen point three-eight.
I'll second.
Great, that was Commissioner Edward's seconding. Um. Any more discussion? All right, it's been moved and seconded that we, uh, approve ordinance number oh, two thousand and twenty-three dash oh-one-seven, Tombwater Municipal Code eighteen thirty-eight, floodplain overlay, um, to move to the city council. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, our motion passes and, um, it moves to the city council. Thanks, everybody. Um. Brad, do you want to talk to us about, um, joint meeting?
Yeah, uh, I, first of all, thank you for, uh, you're dealing with the, the floodplain ordinance, which is a complex matter in a fairly short timeframe. Uh, we, we will try not to do that again too much in the future. There are some things that I remember that I think I can finally talk about, uh, related to the comp plan update, and this also feeds into this joint meeting approaches discussion. Uh, first, some information for you. Uh, we received notice, well, we have completed the re, the request for proposals process for the middle housing, uh, development code amendments. And we have selected a firm, S C J, to help us with those amendments. We're now currently working through contracting with them. Uh, we're probably going to have a, an approved contract ready by the end of this month. Uh, that will be important because they will be helping us, uh, deal with a whole slew of housing, uh, related issues in the development code, uh, primarily how do we make, uh, increasing, uh, large, adding things like duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes to existing single-family neighborhoods? How we can make that work? So that will be an important thing, and their, their work program basically takes us through the end of this year uh, to draft those amendments and lead that discussion as part of the process. Uh, also want to mention that we are almost, uh, have our inter-local agreements approved for the land capacity analysis that will be needed for both our land use and our housing element. Uh, I mentioned that the, we have completed the process for allocating, uh, housing across all econ, uh, economic groups for the city. Now it's a matter of looking at our existing zoning and what we need to do and determining whether we have sufficient lands for that or not. And the Thurston Regional Planning Council will be taking the lead on that process. It'll probably take two or three months. Once we have that information, then we can really dive into specific changes to land use and housing and how that will look. Uh, related to the housing discussion, we are also, um, in the process of working with Lacey, the county, and the City of Olympia on selecting a consultant to help us with the displacement study that is a required element of the housing element update. Uh, as you recall, we're supposed to be dealing with racially disparate impacts as part of this update, and the displacement study is part of that process. It's essentially determining what are the risks on particular neighborhoods for, uh, either through gentrification or through requiring, you know, allowing for additional, uh, densities of housing on existing residents, and how do we mitigate for those impacts? So all of that work is going to be happening at the same time. We've got, I believe, four firms have submitted, uh, app, uh, requests for proposals for that. We're in the process of reviewing that, and hopefully we'll have interviews next week and be able to select a firm shortly for that. Uh, we'll be sharing the results of all that when we, when we have that. That brings us back to the joint meeting approaches. And this is coming out of the joint meeting that the planning commission had with the city council in December to talk about the work program in general for two thousand and twenty-four. And there were some scott, uh, conversations after that between the planning commissioners about what things, what we can particularly do to help improve the relationship. Uh, what other things should we be looking for? Uh, before I turn it over to the planning commissioners to have a discussion about this, I want to point you back to the, uh, planning commission schedule that was included in your packet. The big items that I want to call your attention to is we've scheduled, uh, some joint, uh, meetings with the planning, and with the planning commission and the city council, uh, both in the terms of the sit-down work sessions, as well as some tours of the community dealing with specific issues. The first one that is coming up will be at the beginning of April, which will be a tour, bus tour of Tombwater and adjoining neighborhoods to talk about housing and what are particular things that we should be looking at and what it actually looks like on the ground, and hopefully start some conversations regarding that. In addition to that, in June, July, uh, we're going to be focusing on three specific issues as part of joint work sessions. Uh, first will be the development code. I mentioned the middle housing is a component of that. Uh, climate, and then economic development. Uh, all of these things, I think, are good joint discussion topics, uh, for the planning commission and the city council to talk about what they're seeing, what they're doing, and what is important as part of the update. And so we're going to be doing that during the summer. The other reason for the scheduling during the summer for the council especially is we anticipate they're going to be fairly busy with budget come the fall and late summer. So we want to schedule this when there's, they have more time available. And finally, we're going to have a tour, uh, in August with the, with the planning commission and city council dealing with transportation. Uh, this will also be an issue, I think, uh, that will, as you, for those of you who follow the open house, uh, definitely some transportation issues were raised, but there are definitely some things I think that would benefit from seeing things in the field and joint discussions about where we are in those things. So I would like to, uh, basically open the discussion back to the planning commission on, on what your thoughts were and how all these things could work together and what we as staff should be doing. and what we as staff should be doing to help you, first of all, work together as a planning commission better and also work together with the city council.
Great. Thank you, Brad. That's a good lead in. All right. Any, any thoughts on this right now? Was that Commissioner Varela?
Yeah. Brad, we had talked briefly at that December meeting. Were there any tools or software or anything that we could use to collaborate with the city council? So while we're in between sessions, is there something, and we mentioned it might be an issue of public availability for information or how that is shared? Or is there anything that we can do with that?
Yeah, that was a question that staff had. We had talked with our communication folks about that because we have a couple of things that we have to operate under. One is accessibility requirements and two, public information requirements. So what we, we don't have a, a way necessarily to share files between meetings, between council and the planning commission because we trigger requirements for quorum and therefore it's a public act and therefore we must provide sufficient notification. So we're, what we're really going to have to do is focus on our communications within the meetings and as part of the packets that the staff is preparing. And staff would serve as the conduit between gathering any of the information and the ideas that comes and sending that out and processing that as part of the, you know, the next meeting's discussion.
Thank you.
Brad, I am wondering if you mentioned the contractors and I'm wondering if part of the, part of those contracts might include, I'll call it helping to structure some of those joint sessions with the council to, to, if, if there's a particular question or a particular way that we want to explore and issue together with them, you know, kind of in a structured way. It's, is that something that we would call on one of the, one of the consultants for?
I think we would have that available as part of the missing, and part of the middle housing discussion and the climate discussion. I, especially with the climate discussion, because I think there's a significant component there for helping with public discussion. We haven't gotten responses yet on the transportation RFP that's gone out that hasn't closed yet. But I'm hoping there is a component included in the contracts for that.
Okay. And maybe, and maybe not just with city council, but any time that we might want to meet with other relevant groups, TRPC or subgroups of TRPC or the county or whatever.
I think for those purposes, we're relying primarily on us as the staff resources. What we do have now in our communications department is we have, Margot has joined us. And she has been an excellent resource for going out and getting people and working with people. So we're going to be sort of expanding what we could potentially do with our communications team as part of this process. And they've indicated a strong willingness to work with us. In our case, we just need to make sure that we arrange all these things in sufficient time for them to put it into their schedule and, and get it, get it underway.
Yeah, okay. Well, I guess regardless of whether there's, you know, involvement from, from those folks. I think it will be good to have a focus for each of the joint sessions so that, you know, we're, we're using everybody's time well. I know that, you know, the, especially the council has so many other things going on that we, if there are, you know, ways to, to really get the, really get the issues, you know, front and center for us. Looks like Commissioner Edwards has a remark.
Yeah, no, thank you. And, and I completely agree. And I know for me, kind of some of the best meetings that I'm in always have like the goals or like what the outcomes of the meeting need to accomplish. So maybe having those written down or kind of coming to an agreement with the city council on, okay, for this meeting, this is what we need to do at the end of it, or this is what needs to come out of it would be really helpful going in because then I think we would all be on the same page about what, what we should be talking about and what we should be doing.
And from the staff perspective, I, I think we're going to use the housing tour as our dry run for that. I like, I appreciate the input on the, the expected outcomes and direction on that. But what I anticipate is that the March meetings with the planning commission will be having a discussion of sort of the structure and what we intend to do with the housing tour. And we'll be asking for your input on how that is and, and how, what improvements we can make before we, we go live with that as part of the, the packets and process.
That sounds good. Other thoughts on, on our joint, joint meetings approaches and the opportunity to interact with the council? I always enjoy those. They're, it's, you know, they're, they're just really great and have some direct interaction.
Yeah. And for your information, housing is a huge, huge issue with the council. And that, that incorporates everything from, you know, building more housing to dealing with homelessness, to dealing with manufactured home parks and all of those things, conversions of those things. So there is a very high level of interest in city council in approaching those issues and dealing with those effectively as part of this update process.
All right. Did we, did we give you something to go with, Brad?
Yeah, I, I want to touch on a couple of things just to let you, and I apologize not having this all laid out ahead of time. Number one, the council is in the process of updating their strategic priorities for the city. They've had a retreat. They will have another retreat coming up, I believe, next week to basically take an evening to, to work through all those things. I'm, our hope is that the strategic priorities that are currently in place will be a little more focused, a little more regimented. Right now, it's a, it's a, it's about 35 different things that all are basically given the same weight. We're hoping that the process will help the, the council focus that a lot more. We don't anticipate necessarily that the, the broader themes will change very much. But I think that will help us a lot in, in guiding our process through the update. I also wanted to bring you back to, give you an update on, on the status of the amendments that we made last year to the comprehensive plan and also the housekeeping amendments. Both of those ordinances were reviewed and approved by the council last week. There was only one change that was made by the council to the development housekeeping, and that was add additional language regarding shadows created by structures, you know, industrial structures that went above the height limit. There was a concern by the council that there wasn't enough in there to make sure that an applicant could demonstrate that they weren't having impact on neighboring properties. So essentially they took your recommendations in the case of the comprehensive plan update amendments. They said they were fine. They had no changes and they were just a minor change to the housekeeping amendments.
Good. That bodes well. I guess, gonna ask you sort of, you don't have to maybe answer this, but and it's, and it's just been a couple of months since our December meeting, but it seems to me like we're in pretty good sync with the council. But, but what do you think?
No, I, I think we are. It's not unusual for the council to make a minor change to a recommendation. And in fact, that's their prerogative. And that doesn't mean that they don't agree with the overall recommendation from the commission. It just means that they're like you, seeing specific things that could be tweaked and improved. And I don't think that's, I think that's a positive because number one, they're looking through the work that you did saying, yes, I, we, we agree with this, but let's just move it a little bit here to deal with the issue. I anticipate that kind of thing will continue as part of our process this year.
Great, great. All right. Don't want to cut anybody off. You need, any further discussion on this? I bet we get a chance to talk about it some more too, if we need to. Okay. All right. All right, Ben. Um, let's see. Brad, our next meeting date is the 27th. And work session on our open house.
Yeah. What are, yes, we will be talking about what we, what we discussed and what we heard at the open house. We had a lot. We had over, over 60 people attend, both in person and online, which is excellent. We had a lot of good questions that were asked, and so we, we want to share all that with you. Also tomorrow, the survey will close for the comp plan. And so the following meeting in the beginning of March, we'll be talking about both results from that survey and next steps from that.
Great. Great. Thanks. All right. Last call for any, any remarks or actions to take. Is that Commissioner Varela?
Yep. I move that we adjourn for the evening.
Great. Thank you.
I'll second.
That was Commissioner Edward seconding. Great. Thanks. Good meeting, everybody. Let's see. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn our meeting tonight. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. All right. Looks like we're, we're, did a good job. All right. Thanks, everybody. We're adjourned.